Meeting of the Hinsdale High School Township District 86. Meeting will come to order, it's Monday, October 7th, at 7:00 PM at the Hinsdale South Little Leader. Usually at this point we stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, but prior to reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to take a moment of silence in memory of Gabrielle Bocken, a former alum who passed away. Let's just move on over to silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Ms. Manley?
Present.
Mr. Corcoran?
Here.
Mr. Kuehl?
Here.
Mr. Cassini?
Here.
Mrs. Gallo?
Here.
Mrs. Planson?
Here.
Dr. Skoda?
Present.
All right, next on the agenda is audience communication. You are limited to five minutes and I will attempt to give you a warning sign in about four minutes that you are coming to the end of your time. First person who's requested to address the Board is Mr. Bruce Davidson of Hinsdale.
I'm Bruce Davidson and some would say I'm very kind of beginning my time. I live in Hinsdale and have a daughter in the Seating class at Central. It was either at the last meeting or the meeting before that one of our neighbors took it upon themselves to report to you rumors and community feelings and sort of thing. So in the spirit of that sort of thing, I thought I'd tell you about something that has come to my attention that some people seem to be concerned about, and that is the state of the reserves. In fact, I understand one person even thought that you were voting on the 11th. Oh, thanks. And the concern is that you're about to liquidate the entire District 86 reserves. And I am concerned about that because I've attended the board meetings, I've watched the newspapers and reports, and it seems to me that this rumor concern is totally false. And I don't understand the basis for it. So the first thing that occurred to me is where does this come from? Because anyone that's been to the meetings or watched the videos or the papers would know that this is not true. And I really haven't entirely been able to track the source down, but I did find that apparently there was some sort of meeting between a couple members of the board and someone in the business office, the business manager of the temporary. And I'm not sure I can repeat the names of the members that were involved, but they were women and they had voted in favor of Policy 2, 225, the Barrett Policy. And of course, and I understand that these people came away from that meeting with documents and information, and that apparently had not come from the rest of the board.
Excuse me, Mr. Davidson, I was at that meeting and the information was shared with the entire board, just so that you know the information is correct. Information was shared with the entire board so that you do not start any false rumors.
Okay, and they knew you were going into the meeting and the documents that you asked for, and the documents you asked for, you guys fought in accordance with 225, did it?
Yes, it was not a publicly, it was not three members of the board, it was information-
No, 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 I didn't say, did you tell me about it? I said, did the rest of the board know?
No, they did not, but the information that was shared with us was also shared with the entire board.
Well, the last time I read the Barrett Policy, and of course your name isn't Barrett, but it set out a fairly specific means by which a board member is supposed to acquire information. And I'm not sure that the procedure you just described to me fits that policy because I recall-
Well, Mr. Davidson, let me, because I was the other female in the room. So, my name is Kay Gallo. I contacted Dr. Law because I wanted to have, I wanted to talk with Mr. Yegi, and I listed up some questions that I had for Mr. Yegi.
Mr. Yegi being the business manager.
Being the business manager. I asked Dr. Law, could I have, could I meet with he and with Mr. Yegi, or just Mr. Yegi alone? How would you like to do this? And he said I could go ahead and contact him as long as I CC'd him, and I did that. And then I informed that Mrs. Planson would like to, in the spirit of conserving time and energy, she had some questions too. We gave some questions. Mr. Yegi created some documents. We didn't ask for those documents. He created them based on our questions, and then we asked for those documents to be shared with the entire board.
You didn't ask for the documents, you just kind of-
I had questions and he answered them with paper.
You know about Policy 2, 225-
Was I not supposed to ask questions?
It seems to me that that goes to the acquisition of documents. 225, are you familiar with the policy? You voted for it, is that correct?
Oh, I did vote for it, so I was not supposed to, I didn't ask for documents. I asked questions-
About the second slide.
Okay, anyway, I'm not sure that this idea of reporting rumors and policies and that concerns is entirely productive. And maybe my neighbors and I would really be better off referring these inquiries directly. And thank you for your clarification.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davidson. Next person to address the Board, Linda Burke.
My topic's not rumors or accusations. And I'm cutting it way down because I don't want to take up too much time. My name is Linda Burke, I live in Hinsdale. I'm a proud parent of two graduates, and of course I'm a taxpayer, as are we all, and as well a very concerned homeowner. In the fall of 2013, some members of this board are talking about, I hope just discussing, since everything needs to be discussed, a radical change of vision for District 86. To be accomplished by using a bad choice under the tax cap, to drastically lower, if not destroy, are actually quite modest financial reserve. In the interest of transparency, many of us would like to ask all of you, both Board and Administration, for a truly forthright discussion in answer to these following questions. We should discuss, what would the financial cost of deferred maintenance and lower credit be? As every homeowner knows, these choices very quickly lead to much higher spending unless you just don't care what happens to your home. But if you do, those deferred repairs are going to cost a lot more. And what would the impact of this step be on our programs? And thank you, any board members who are very concerned about this, we need a full and forthright discussion. And now, another question. If trashing our reserves is such a great idea, why isn't Nutria or any other top-ranked high school even considering such a thing? Nutria holds a nine-month reserve compared to our much more standard three, and they're just not about to throw it away. And is any, for that matter, is any other Chicago-area high school district even contemplating doing this? I can't find out about a single one. If no one else is even thinking about it, why do we need this radical experiment here in District 86? Why can't they let someone else go up the precipice and see how it goes with it? Actually, no, let's not have anyone do it, but, okay. And then, another important question we really need to discuss, what can we learn from the experience of high school districts that have been forced to liquidate their reserves? And it's not pretty. So why do we do this to ourselves when there is no need? There's a lot of propaganda that we're extravagant, but in fact, we have substantially lower per pupil expenditures than Nutria, our arts rival, and the other districts that have a presence in the top 20 in the Illinois State Report Card. So in fact, we're getting a terrific bang for the buck here, and this really needs to be demonstrated. And I have a comparative chart between Trier here and between the Seating, if you're interested. But there's, so we're already extremely fiscally conservative, but there's only so much we can come without, you know, beginning to affect program quality. If money didn't matter, then Harvard would have the same tuition as COD. Then, if you are going to reject the Nutria paradigm of stellar academics, ample reserves, and AAA credit, exactly what high schools would, you'd like us to be compared with? What sort of league would you like us to be in? Homeowners cannot afford to pretend that such comparisons don't exist or they don't matter. Then, we should talk about specific examples of other high school districts living in the same fiscal plight that you would like to put us into, you know, and explain how it's working out for them. Dr. Skoda once said, why would we need the air conditioning of Glenn Bar doesn't have it? It's interesting that he chose, as his role model, a district so broke that for some years they actually lost an entire period of their school day. Now, I think-
One minute.
Thank you, Claudia. Some of his coalition might, that's fine, but I think others would not, would be very concerned. I suspect that this radical degradation of our program was never expected or desired by most taxpayers who mainly happen to be homeowners, appropriately concerned with reputation and property values for our schools. So we need a completely transparent public discussion on all these serious questions. I hope the Administration and the Board would fully participate with that. And of course, many of us hope that a serious look at the issues will inspire the majority of board members to step back from the precipice and follow a more responsible path. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Professor Burke, as an English professor, you're well aware of when you quote, you should give the entire quote. When I quoted Glenn Bar, that was one of many other schools, including LT. So don't be selective, we can just pick out one. Additionally, Professor Burke, you were at the last meeting where we did the budget. You were aware we have a $1.4 million surplus, so how, which is going to the reserves? So the reserves are going to be $1.4 billion more than they were before. So how can we allege that people are slashing the reserves? Nobody at this table, nobody at this table said, we need to get rid of the reserve policy, we need to get rid of the three months. So I would like to know, what is the source of all the emails the Board is getting saying, don't slash our reserves, keep the three-month reserve? Everybody up here is in favor of that. Nobody's talking about it. We have $1.4 million more in reserve than last year. So what's all this hysteria about?
I hope nothing.
Thank you, Dr. Skoda.
Prove me wrong.
Okay, Mr. Roger Kempa is the last individual who's requested to address the Board. Mr. Kempa, please approach.
Roger Kempa.
Could you speak up, please?
Pardon?
Speak up a little?
Of course. Roger Kempa from Darian, a friendly place to live. I would like to compliment the Board on having a board meeting here in this more professional environment. And it might even be conducive to a much shorter board meeting if you have it here. More room out there, less room up here. Yeah, I like it. I heard Ms. Burke speak, and I'm amazed at what she does with financial numbers. But she did make statements that there are high school districts, I guess in the Chicago area or Northern Illinois, in our area, that liquidated all their reserves. I'd like to know which ones. And I wondered, and she said, what other districts besides Nutria should we compare ourselves to? That's easy, that's no brainer. I mean, there's, you know, Donalds Road High School District, there's LT, Lions Township High School District, you know, there's other ones right in our very area. You don't have to go all the way, what is that, about 40 miles or longer, to Nutria, which has a total different demographic environment than ours. And I think your problem, it is a problem, that you forget about Hinsdale South being a part of the district. It is not solely Hinsdale Central. And it's constantly brought up Nutria, and it's come apples to oranges. And consideration and much attention has to be given to Hinsdale South. We are a two-district entity, and that's what I would say in regard to her comments. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kempa.
Actually, I do, my numbers are all about the entire district.
Mr. Orin.
Okay, we're gonna move on.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, at this time, is there any objections to moving up closed, adjournments to closed session to discuss appointment, appointment compensation, district performance of employee employment?
Claudia, if you could get some limitations on closed session time before, so the audience knows how far, how long they have to go out and recess.
About 10 minutes or so, and then we'll be back. Okay, so is there a motion to go to closed session? So a second moved by Jennifer, a second by Kay. Roll call, please.
Dr. Skoda?
Aye.
Ms. Manley?
Aye.
Mr. Cassini?
Aye.
Mr. Corcoran?
Aye.
Mr. Kuehl?
Aye.
Mrs. Gallo?
Aye.
Mrs. Planson?
Aye.
Dr. Skoda?
Aye.
Okay, so tonight, the Board has voted 6 to 1 to agree to remove the acting portion of Dr. Bruce Law's title, officially naming him the new Superintendent of Hinsdale Township High School District 86. This Board and our community have had a unique opportunity to publicly vet him for this position, as we watched him leave this district as acting superintendent during these past few months. In both his position as superintendent and assistant superintendent, as well as the acting superintendent, Dr. Law has proven himself to be the right fit at the right time. At the heart of our decision were Bruce's core values. During all of our reactions of Dr. Law, he has proven himself to be a man of great integrity, both honest and trustworthy. Beyond his exceptional qualities as an individual, he also has the necessary experience. He is a proven academic who is hardworking and not afraid of a challenge, as well as someone who understands the internal climate and external expectations of the Hinsdale 86 community. Since Dr. Law already embodies everything we were searching for in a district leader, we determined that a national search, or a surge at all, would be unnecessary use of the district's resources. So at this time, we would also not only like to acknowledge Dr. Law, but we would like to acknowledge his wife, Jennifer, and his two children, Gabrielle and Carson, who are all here today to see their dad elevated to superintendent. Since Dr. Law already embodies everything we were searching for in a district leader, we determined that a national search, or a surge at all, would be unnecessary use of the district's resources. So at this time, we would also not only like to acknowledge Dr. Law, but we would like to acknowledge his wife, Jennifer, and his two children, Gabrielle and Carson, who are all here today to see their dad elevated to superintendent. Aunt Gabrielle, we want to thank you for sharing such an extraordinary talent and person with District 86. We do know that this job requires long hours and many late nights away from you in order to benefit the students, parents, staff, community, and taxpayers of the district. And we thank you for supporting him in his role as acting superintendent and now as superintendent. And we proudly name Dr. Law, Superintendent of District 86.
If I could say something that Dr. Law has been around for two or three years, I never knew him that well. However, in the last three months, he has totally blown the position. And the thing that impresses me most about Dr. Law is he is an educator first, he has a bachelor's and a master's in classics, and he's Latin and Greek. He's a common person, he returns calls, and quite honestly, I was hopeful for his performance once Dr. Law left, but he's far exceeded that. And Shakespeare had a quote about greatness, that some are born great, some achieve greatness, and others have that thrust upon them. And you are in a latter category. And we thank you for filling the role and you've done it admirably.
Do you want to say a few words, Al?
Of course, it's always gratifying to be recognized for one's work, but asking me to continue in this role as the superintendent is at once exciting and humbling. One approach to making a hiring decision is to use experience, and the other, of course, is to use potential. And I realize the Board has made a bet on my potential, and I'm determined to exceed even my expectations. Thank you for your confidence in my abilities. I'm very happy to continue working with you and for you as we move District 86 forward to realize its best years. Thank you.
So with that said, we'll move on to the first item on the agenda in your role as Superintendent, and that's the issue of board votes. So this has been for us, I think, two or three times with versions of rewrites. And at Corcoran was so kind as to attempt to do some rewrites, putting in some of the statements and thoughts of various board members into these five goals that topped our list in July. So do we have any comments on this? Do we need to discuss this further, or are we at this point of making a motion and moving to a vote?
Claudia, I'd like to just inject for a minute.
Sure.
Not everyone would understand what we went through, just so, just to paraphrase, we hired someone from ISB as a coordinator, and everyone submitted their goals blindly, they submitted their votes for the different objectives blindly, and there was a list of more than five, where basically all the goals were then disclosed. And from that list, we, there's 10, and then we can't have so many goals, and now we have five. I took some of the comments that I've heard from the meetings to try to make some adjustments to those, and that's, here we are at this stage. I wanted to give a short synopsis of the journey we had for these goals, and these are, these goals are adjustable according to what we see in the next year, but I think it would be good for us to start to do something as soon as we can, since we've already voted on this and we know where all the thoughts lie.
Any other written comments at this time? So at this time, then, we're looking for a motion to approve the board's goals. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Rick.
Second.
Second by Ann. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cassini?
Aye.
Mr. Corcoran?
Aye.
Mr. Kuehl?
No.
Mrs. Gallo?
Aye.
Mrs. Planson?
Aye.
Dr. Skoda?
Aye.
Ms. Manley?
Aye.
Okay, so there's Bruce, it's 1. Okay, next on the agenda is the RFP for legal services. Dr. Law put out a request for proposal of legal services, two weeks ago, is that right? Two or three weeks ago? Yeah. All right. And so the, maybe you want to take us through the process of how you open this and so forth?
Sure, we put out the specifications for legal services and left it open, it was on the internet, we sent out the RFP, and these are the responses we got back from those law firms.
So you have six firms that came in, and in terms of process, we need to determine our course of action and whether we are going to interview, whether we'd like to extend the RFP for a little longer so that we can catch some other fish? Anyone?
How would these law firms have known the fact that we are advertising for law firms?
Well, I think it depends on the law firm. I think that most of them are, law firms are very well-known in districts that represent districts. We made phone calls, we advertised it in the paper, we put it on the internet. We didn't, we needed at least one response from what we had not heard of. So it must have been out there enough that we got a response that surprised us. The other responses, quite honestly, were not surprising.
Dr. Law, how many phone calls did you make?
I don't know. Gary, do you know how many phone calls maybe you made?
I know of two.
We just want to make sure that people knew that that was out there.
So two people, two firms were contacted?
Maybe.
By phone?
Yeah, according to, Gary, I have to check between to see exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And Dr. Law and our two attorneys here is, and I'm not familiar in this field, is this a big enough pool, or are there some other names we should extend the deadline
I would say that we should extend the deadline and try and consider a couple of more. If it's been out there advertised, you know, for a couple of weeks, my opinion is, you know, you snooze, you lose. Have the RFPs been opened, or are they still sealed and everything is still confidential?
They're still sealed and everything's still confidential.
Thank you.
I would tend to agree with Jennifer on this concept, because we have the ability at any point in time in the future to go out for another bid or to get a specialty law firm, for instance, if we have a, you know, if we want a specialty labor attorney, or we have, or we have some special ed areas, if we really want to have some expertise in that, and the general law firm that we hired doesn't have that. So I would, I would move for us to advance this and go through the evaluation process. And this is basically, because this is for a general, a general law firm, we didn't say that, you know, that we can't go out and use specific law firms for. We have a workman's comp case, or we have special ed cases, so I would, I'm more in the mode to advance things and then look back at really what the engagements will be in the future if we need specialty engagements, or if we're not satisfied with the staff expertise of the law firm in one particular area.
And how do we ascertain which of these is the best fit for us? And of course, one way to do it is to bring them all in for a headliner each. The problem with that is generally the slickest presentation rather than the best firm. So I mean, how, I mean, how do we as laymen really know that this one lawyer, maybe he's stuttering a little bit or whatever else, his firm is much better than the guy that is very smooth?
Well, that's a, that's a good point, but, right, one of the things that you could do is ask for references, but again, people are going to, you know, put their best performance in for the reference anyway. So I mean, usually the course of action is to interview these, and one of them is already a law firm, so I would imagine that we would just not interview them since we know them, you know, and interview the other five.
Why couldn't you interview? You're asking the same question when you interview anyone. You're asking basically the same questions over and over again, and you might have a response.
Yeah, and sometimes experience speaks louder than words.
So then, what you're saying is you don't even want to hire them, so why do you bother to interview them? I mean, that's basically what you're saying, and I don't think that's a problem.
Well, I don't think anybody said we're not going to hire a firm firm. If you're a best, then we should hire them.
Okay, so do we want to schedule interviews at some point, so that's in our calendars if you draw a date?
Claudia, before you go down that path, I don't object to it, although I'm not sure that, it may be worth considering, I mean, the way I would see a law firm being hired and differentiated is that, and I'm applying my private experience to a public situation, maybe it's not appropriate, but Bruce would, A, look at the call-
Bruce would, A, look at the cost, we want to do something that's cost effective, but B, follow that up with input from other superintendents. I mean, to me, that's your best, they can say whatever they want, sitting at a table in front of us, but that doesn't tell us anything about their real quality. And the only people who can judge their real quality are people who've used them. That's how I judge law firms before I use them. I call other general counsels and ask them their experience with these people. And then, again, I could be completely off the wall, but I see Bruce coming back to us and saying, you know, I've done the due diligence and here's who I recommend, number one, number two, number three. But again, it's only a thought.
And again, with cost, the problem is, some will give you hourly rates by clerks, assistants, and other ones will say it's $2.50 an hour, no matter who you get, so you get a bargain when you get the principal on. So it's really hard to ascertain which is the best deal. But I kind of like Victor's idea that somebody do some shifting.
Well, we can do that, but we struggle to meet a date to accelerate this prior to the next board.
There's also the, the side of it, following up with what Victor said, where you would have a board president or whatever, a legal manager, or you'd call a couple of the board presidents, where they, these different law firms represented them to see what their, what their behavior is. Because it's, you definitely want primarily to understand the staff input on that, but you also want to understand the board input, because the board is improving their, you know, legal fees as well as giving a thumbs up or down on legal settlements and what matters. So I think that would be probably a prudent way to do that as a pre-screen before we bring everybody into the dog and pony show.
And a very good question, whoever's talking to the principals of these firms is, what school accounts have you lost recently and why? It's kind of like a teacher interview. When somebody comes in, what book have you read recently? And if the person doesn't come up with any, that's probably not a good hire.
Should we first, like, start with opening up the RFPs and having Bruce look at them and making sure that, you know, things are in order of what we asked for? And, and then we can screen from there?
And I would recommend, I don't think it makes sense to have six firms come in here and do a dog and pony show. If you can do this due diligence and maybe we get some input from board presidents, we could narrow it down to two or three tops. And then we're not bringing people in who have no chains.
Right. I would say three.
I would like to see three out of these six.
Oh, we got to base it strictly on price because sometimes you get a gap to pay.
No, you don't. I, I, I thought it was, you know, we're looking for quality.
Right.
And, and as Mr. Corcoran said, they could be our general counsel, but we could also diversify our, our needs as they come and go. I would like to see more diversification.
So I agree with you there.
And in fairness, we know that we have our current firm. I think they need to be in the running until the end because we need to ultimately compare what they have to offer compared to what we're getting.
I think on that, that's, that's probably, you know, a good sales pitch for them at this stage. But I'm, I'd like to defer having no experience with the school board, many, lots of experience in the private sector, private boards, let the staff come up with their three recommendations. And at the same time, we might, as a boards, elect one of our astute attorneys here to do, you know, their due diligence on the side from a board perspective. And at that point in time, those two lines cross and meet and that's a, that would be a decision point, you know, to decide which three we bring in. That would be my own suggestion.
Right, so that shouldn't take that long. It should be within probably a week or so, we should be able to, well, today's the seventh, by the fourteenth, we should be able to come up with at least three. Right? And I guess I'm delegated to talk to other board presidents.
If you wanted to do that, I'd kind of be happy to try, but you're the president, so.
I'd be happy to delegate that.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only other question, I'm sorry, let me just interject. It seems to me that we have, we have organizational, I would just like to get Bruce's input about getting stuff like, working on stuff like this. If you, you tell us that that makes sense, but we've got a lot of things that are in the queue, most notably having a business manager hired and a permanent HR person hired. I personally don't want to take away from the highest priority goals, so please just keep us informed. And if you say, you know, I have, I have to work on these other things and getting this done in a week or something like that doesn't, just takes me away from the higher priority things. I'd love to have everything done in a week, but we got to pick and choose.
Yeah, that is a challenge because we have a lot of things in the queue. The, first, the fourteenth is a holiday, so I assume that means Tuesday, actually.
I'm sure.
Another day. So it's, you know, I don't, we'll, we'll work on it.
We'll get through it.
The, I can keep Claudia, the link, as we go through this, the kinds of responses I'm getting back from superintendents, because that'll be, that'll be key. If you call someone and they, they call you back when they, when they can, I'm sure they'll be very responsive. But it's just a matter of getting all the information back and being under-valuated.
All right, then, maybe we're better off kind of playing with that here as he gets the information back. What we'll do is send our, around a note and try and come up with a date. Does that work for everyone? Okay. All right, so that'll be the course of action on the law firms. Next up on the agenda, Facility Committee, Mr. Corcoran, I'm sorry, the two dead, Ed. Is there a report?
A fellow board member's in a report. We do have a request and a draft agenda made by Gary Legge and forwarded by Bruce Law. We would like to convene a meeting to discuss warranty, what's going on with the warranty items for Gilbain and their substitute contractors as well as a few other items I can cover and put on that agenda. The 2014 projects is up on the screen. That's, I'm glad we have this. I can't really off that screen without the last.
I move to, I move to pass that motion.
Motion to approve to charge the Facility Committee to set a meeting date and review the following facility initiatives. At that meeting, the 2013 warranty project, 2014 project, synergistic review and other items as determined pertinent by the administration slash committee chair. It's moved by Victor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kay. Roll call, please. Mr. Corcoran?
Aye.
Mr. Kuhn?
No.
Mrs. Gallo?
Aye.
Mrs. Blanson?
Aye.
Dr. Skoda?
Aye.
Ms. Manley?
Aye.
Mr. Cassini?
Aye.
I do have a question about, I think this might just be a typo, where Dr. Skoda is off the Facility Committee. Is that just?
Okay, thank you.
Oh, no, he's up.
Well, he was, he's off ours.
Oh, I'm sorry. But he's up on there. All right, so next up on the agenda is the Finance Committee. And we're looking to approve charges to the Finance Committee to set a meeting date and review the following topics: business office reorganization, levy preparation, variance analysis from last year's annual audit report results and other items as determined pertinent by administration and the committee chair. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Moved by Kay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Victor. Roll call, please. Mr. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Gallo?
Aye.
Mrs. Blanson?
Aye.
Dr. Skoda?
Aye.
Ms. Manley?
Aye.
Mr. Cassini?
Aye.
Mr. Corcoran?
Aye.
Next up on the Policy Committee. Do you have a motion set up for Policy Committee? So anyway, this is the second reading of the policies that were reviewed by the Policy Committee deck in September. I believe that the footnotes were removed and there was a question pending regarding the green cleaning. And you indicated to me that you had researched that.
Yes, we did. And all the press policies regarding green cleaning, green products, all of that, that is in the municipal code. That's why it was in press and so, that why, that's why it's in revision of our policy.
So there's the answer to that question. So it is in compliance with the law. So at this time, it's up for us, is there, are there any comments with regard to the policies that are outlined?
Just a, just a general question about policy. I've never been a big fan of policy because often they're ignored, forgotten about, et cetera. I'll just case on point here with, we adopt this green policy, but therefore we totally ignore it and don't look for any green options, et cetera. What is the penalty for us ignoring this policy? Just like an audience member tonight made a reference to a possible policy violation. So what really happens when for three years we don't do green cleaning? And somebody points out to us, you guys aren't doing green cleaning. I mean, what do you do? Shred your shoulders and says, we'll try to do better? So I mean, this is a real problem. Like, for instance, I was reading through the Moore Policies and something I was never aware of, we have a policy that limits all substitute teachers, regardless of their certification, to do more than 120 days. Okay. Therefore, I am sure that's never been enforced and I don't, we know if it should be enforced because there's some substitute teachers, that's their full-time occupation. And if they're good at it, why not let them do a hundred and eighty? They're not prohibited by law. So my question is, what's the sense of all these policies if we just kind of pick and choose, this is kind of say, gotcha, we want to get somebody and sometimes they're worse, sometimes they're not?
Well, Rick, that was one of the reasons I made a comment at the last meeting, that I think it's prudent to, I mean, there are certain policies that have to adopt under law, but it's other ways to be careful about going overboard with policies for that very reason, just set up for instances where we don't follow. So we have to just, as we decide to exist in policies, we have to be careful to do that with respect to things that either are required by law or are policies that we truly want to follow. What happens if you don't? Maybe the RFP for Legal Services is more important than the cert.
Well, like, in any organization, you can have a policy police, you know, the Compliance Committee or something along those lines. And do we really need to focus on that at this stage? The answer is probably unanimous, no, with the board. You know, I'm looking at that, I think we would like to just collaborate on issues and if there's controversy, we try to work that out the best we can, but keep advancing the interest of the students and the taxpayers. So I, I share in the, the theoretical question of, we have these policies, how do we police the policies? And if you don't disagree with them, why are we implementing them? If the state says we should implement, you know, do we really have to do that? You know, we start getting into deeper and deeper questions, but are we actually, we're advancing the district, the answer is no, we're not, because those things are on our agenda right now. Maybe that will be later. So I agree with the theoretical question and the substance of the argument, it's just, what's the action that we take after that? Say, there is no action at this time.
No, there's no action at this time, but we brought the F for vote next time.
I should say that if the board passed a policy, say, green cleaning, that we would execute that. I mean, that would, that would be the direction from the board, that this is the way we need to perceive when it comes to cleaning. There's all, there's a list of items that you're supposed to do. And if the board passed it as a policy, we would say, that's what we need to do, and we'd start working on that.
You're answering exactly the way superintendents.
My experience with board policy has, I was on Policy Committee when I was at my end, and we wrote, we wrote the entire policy manual. It is, I use the policy as, you know, your guidance and what does, what does policy say then is how you base your decisions and decisions of the district, decisions of the board. It's up to each board member, it's their responsibility to be familiar with the policy because the policy guides the board. That's my opinion on board policy.
Just a second for green policy. Would it be permissible to add a qualifier? And of course, everybody wants to be green. I don't think there's anybody that favors green or solving the earth or river, whatever, either conservative or liberal. Wouldn't it be helpful to have an addendum to that as long as it is not cost prohibitive and it is not an inferior product? Because you may be going green, but it won't get sludge off the floor.
You know, there again, if you're going to do that, I have no objection with that concept. I would just, from a language standpoint, I would just say, leading into the administration to take into account cost and effectiveness, then you're not setting a hard fast rule.
Somebody can change the wording on that. Is there any other comments with regard to these policies that are currently in? Okay, hearing none. Almost finished. We will be moving on to the Daring Committee on Interrogation and Cooperation. I wrote a little bit of the report, which everybody can read, so I'm not going to reiterate it, but it was a well-attended event. There were well-order hundred individuals there. And the theme on this town hall meeting given by the mayor of Daring was return on investment, return on your taxpayer money. And there were several public bodies there and we are getting more and more public bodies to want to join this as we move along. So Dr. Law came and Dr. Waterman came and, believe it or not, we were underrepresented as a school district with regard to what everybody else put forward. So next time, I'm going to put in the push so it doesn't happen on homecoming weeks. That was a lot of a problem for us. Didn't realize that. So that's Daring Committee on Interrogation and Cooperation. H.R. Curriculum Committee. Okay, so we're looking for a motion to, for the charge to the H.R. Curriculum Committee to set a committee meeting date and review relevant issues. One of the relevant issues, like to move, actually, it's time to amend this motion, to have the H.R. Curriculum Committee start working on putting together a performance review, objectives and measurable goals for Dr. Law based on the board goals that were previously passed. We also need a format, because I've looked at the previous superintendent's evaluation and how they were done. And I think Ross Holbrook, our interim H.R. Director, says that he has many different, he'd be a good source for you, put it that way, for you to work on that. So I will move, I'm going to make a motion and as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Victor. Roll call, please. Mrs. Gallo?
Aye.
Mrs. Blanson?
Aye.
Dr. Skoda?
Aye.
Ms. Manley?
Aye.
Mr. Cassini?
Aye.
Mr. Corcoran?
Aye.
Mr. Kuhn?
No.
Okay, and next up on the agenda is Acting Superintendent, or, sorry, it's the superintendent's report. We need to strike the red act.
Thank you, Claudia. This month's employment report, which is for your review and if you have questions, was to look at certified staff and we polled information from VCR, which is what we use in business finance and also in H.R., and combined that with the, for classroom teachers, the number of courses that they, that they teach. And we also reflected release periods for certified staff. We also had included the other certified staff, not just teachers. So this is the report for October. We also had leave of absence, if someone is out, and then we also indicated teachers who are replacing, teachers who are on leave, we put that in the column as well to communicate that. So that's, this is the employment report for October. We can continue to update this, by the way, as, as teachers' courses change, people that are on leave come back from leave, and we can update this report monthly if this is useful to the board.
Bruce, what's the purpose of this?
Well, initially, the purpose was creating an employment report that the, our, our direction from the board was to create an employment report. But as, as we created this, it became useful to us because we're, if teachers are paying But as we created this, it became useful to us because we're, if teachers are paid out of DCR, comparing what we have in DCR for their, the number of courses that they teach or their full-time equivalents, and compare that to the actual courses that they teach, allows us to make sure that everything is matching up. So it became very useful to us internally as well. Yeah, exactly.
And Bruce is a very humble man. If you called his phone right now, six five five six one one oh, people say, this is Bruce Law, acting superintendent, no, excuse me, assistant superintendent for instruction and curriculum, he didn't even upgrade himself to acting. In terms of how useful this is, and some have questioned this, Dr. Law is too humble to say this, but just from going through this, he's already found glitches in the system, including one person getting paid for an overload when they weren't taking this year when they're not teaching an overload. So it is helpful to do this and it's just like putting a checkbook online or whatever. If there's a hundred eyes looking at it and a hundredth eye can find something, God bless him for finding it. So I think this is useful.
Just ensuring we're not violating the Closed Meeting Act with putting this out here.
I hate to see another open meeting act violation happen.
Just a question, Mr. Skoda.
Oh.
The, everyone who has gone out of leave has been coming from the board, the people who are replacing have also come from the board. It's all, it's all been part of the board agenda at some point.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing nothing further, now we will move on to our Student Services Report by Dr. Joyce Powell. And this time, I do want to point out that we have to schedule it at eight fifty-five and it's eight oh five.
That doesn't mean you can take off.
You might have to go out after I tell my husband, it'd be really. Thank you. My intention tonight is to provide you with additional information, ongoing information on the Student Services Management Report that you requested. So you do have the documents that I provided in advance and I will divide tonight's report into three areas. First, I'll review the district's special ed profile, which will be this document. And second, I'll provide a general overview of the district's special ed programs. And then I'll conclude with my specifics for the program review that I intend to go forward with. So to begin, this special ed profile is one that is given to every school district, every public school district in Illinois. If you remember back in August, you received page one of this report with background information that included demographics, the number of students, the percent of disabilities in each category. And so I think this first page, we can probably set aside and move on to the remaining portions of this profile. The second, the second section is student performance. And this is the section that addresses the state assessments reflective of the eleven, twelve school year. I'm sorry, I did not point that out, that this is our most recent report and it is the two thousand and eleven, twelve school year. Do you want me to wait until that comes up? If you can go over to the second page. So section two will provide you information on the indicators related to state assessments. And that includes participations in the tests and the actual performance. As you can see, overall, our scores have improved over the three years that are reported here. And with students with disabilities, with students with IP's. Our gap between special education students and general education students has decreased. This is the overall reporting. More specifically, on the next page, you'll see the breakout with reading and math. I'll speak about reading first. We did improve in two thousand and ten, eleven, and then went down a bit in two thousand and eleven, twelve by about four percentage points. And keep in mind, yes.
Just on this overall student performance.
Yes.
Am I right in reading that the district's gap in two thousand and one, two thousand and twelve was greater than the cooperative in all high school districts? What would you, what would you say is the reason behind that?
I don't think there's any one reason for that, Mr. Cassidi, but I do intend, as we go through this report tonight, to kind of point out some things that I hope to find out answers to. So I'd like to go back to that. That's okay. So the, while the reading did decrease and then increased again, we see that the gap is still pretty large, really, forty-six point six. That being said, our students' performance in math has consistently increased. Now also keep in mind, this is not the same subgroup. I think you're aware of that. These are different groups. So we have a different group tested every year. We can come back to questions, unless you want to ask.
Well, I just wanted to point out that it's, I think you hit on a very interesting point, that it is different people each year and would be interesting to see if you can, use the growth model in comparison and what of those students, so you can see the change following, you know, certain students and how they grow or it shrinks in comparison with this.
Right. And, you know, remember, this is one snapshot of growth. I believe it was a year ago in Tannword when Dr. Law and I presented to the Board of Education the growth that we had measured within the district using the Explorer Scores, NPSAE. And there was growth and specifically in special education, there was tremendous growth. So, you know, again, this is one snapshot, but it does point out that we have something to look at too. So section three is a little bit more complicated. This section talks about the educational environment, which we refer to as EE. And this is one of those indicators that the state monitors very closely. And we do a great job in this. We should celebrate this. We have a pretty high rate of students participating in the general education classrooms. And that being said, our co-taught classes are indicative of this because co-taught classes, while they have two teachers, that is considered a general education class. So that affords our special education students to participate with their non-disabled peers. And there is so much research to support that students participating with non-disabled peers do far better and achieve higher. So this is a credit to the district and I think, you know, it's something we can come back to too in terms of looking at our programs and services.
Excuse me, Joyce, with your reference to co-taught classes, is there any research, and I can understand how special ed students in co-taught classes would do better, is there any research on how the regular ed kids perform in a co-taught classroom compared to one that was not co-taught?
I know there's research out there, I can't point to it directly tonight, but I'd be happy to provide that for you.
If you find it something that would just be, you know, and quite honestly, if the regular kids are performing better, maybe that's a model we ought to do everywhere.
Yeah, and I'm not certain that the research shows that they do better, but I think in overall, especially in social emotional growth, they learn a lot about their students with disabilities and I've firsthand experience in co-taught teaching and it's very positive. Way back, but it's very positive. So I'll move on to section four, which is, I don't want to even call this complicated. I think it's more confusing than anything. As you can see, this is the high school completion and it's really for the two thousand and ten, eleven school year. And you'll see a considerable drop from oh eight, oh nine, oh nine, ten, and then ten, eleven at seventy-one point four percent. This does not mean that thirty, well, twenty-eight point six percent of our special education students dropped out. That is not what this means. What this means is that there was a new, new legislation, and this was through No Child Left Behind, in how we count who graduates, who receives a diploma. And for example, these special education students who continue on in the transition program, the Adult Opportunity Program, do not receive their diploma until they exit, until they age out. They are not counted as a graduate. And it's quite confusing. I certainly don't agree with this, but it's the law. It's how, how they wanted to count who graduates. So they took the first cohort class of this, you know, beginning freshman year, and that would have been the oh seven, oh eight school year followed through to two thousand and ten, eleven. And seventy-one percent, seventy-one point four percent of the special education students from that freshman cohort on finished and completed and were awarded a diploma in our district. That being said, again, I'm going to repeat myself, but remaining twenty-eight point six percent of special education students did not drop out. As you can see, the dropout rate is much, much lower. It's two point one percent. So that certainly is not indicative of that gap that is now stated here. We are not alone with this type of reporting. I did some research on the other high school districts and they're very similar because we cannot count the students who age into these transition programs.
Joyce, to clarify, a student in the transition program who's with us till twenty-one can still walk across the stage and get a diploma at eighteen, right?
Absolutely. Not to get the diploma. They actually do not receive their diploma until they leave us. If we were to hand them their diploma, we could no longer serve them.
Now how does, you would know the name better than me, but something that Doria's Law or something from LP?
Yes.
So that specifically says what?
That says that a student is entitled to walk through graduation ceremonies.
It would not support.
Correct. And if they choose to participate in the eighteen to twenty-two year program, they walk through, they participate in all the graduation activities because that's their class. Those are the classmates that they want to be with for those activities. Makes all the sense in the world. And yet, they receive their, I'll say maybe their book, their diploma, and they don't receive a diploma until they age out. And we have those ceremonies at our transition center as the students age out and they're wonderful ceremonies. I invite them to one. It's really moving. They really enjoy, they've had lots of years together and, so they're quieter ceremonies, but that's when they receive their diploma.
And the students now can stay until they're twenty-two?
The day before their twenty-second birthday. Right. If they're entitled, if they are eligible for those services. And most of our students do complete through that time period. So then section four, again, this is new in that this year, that this report is the first time we're seeing that graduation rate different than before, recorded differently. And then finally, the last section is pretty much a summary of everything. It's the summary of all the indicators. And as you can see, the district will meet, if the district meets the target, there'll be a checkmark for that specific area. In section one, for graduation rate, we did not meet the state target. It is what it is. And then three A, making adequate yearly progress, this is an area we need to look at. And then five C, which is a percent of students educated in separate environments. So that would be eight percent and the state target is three point nine percent. So we are well over, and that means we are well over placing students out in programs than what the state has targeted.
So what accounts for that?
Well, I'm going to move on to the next part because I think that's probably the best way to answer some of the questions that have been raised. So if you can just bear with me until I get to that part of the program. The second section, the second document that you have, is just an overview of our special education programs. And this would be the major programs that we place the students in. So this does not account for the services, the special classes, any of the specialized instruction that we have outlined. It's just an overview of, does a student participate in the resource program, extended resource, foundations, transition services? These are our major programs. So that's really informational. And then if you move on to the proposed student services program review. You asked why, what accounts for students being outplaced? Why such a large gap? I don't have exact answers to that, but I'd like to find out. And so, as I'm sure you would too, and I want to be as transparent as possible with you in that information. So I am proposing to do a very thorough, intricate program review of all of our special ed programs. And I believe this is a little bit of a lofty goal because I want to complete this by the end of first semester, which would be January sixteenth, so that I can then in turn make recommendations for you for where we might need to make some changes in our programs. I don't have all the answers, but I am looking at some of these indicators where, for example, why do we have so many students outplaced? Is it because they come to us with IP's and they're already outplaced? It's likely that there are many students who do. Is it because our programs can't meet their needs? In some cases, that is what happens. So, so that being said, the outline that I have here to go forward, and I'm not going to be alone in this, I'm taking the department chairs along the ride and assistant department chairs, guidance directors and school psychologists, be collecting data so that we can look at, what are we doing in our programs? What are our student outcomes? Student outcomes being academic outcomes in terms of the transition age students, employment outcomes, in terms of our resource program, how many of these students are going on to college? So I think there's a lot of celebrations and I do, I do believe we'll find a lot of positive information, but I'm also hopeful that we'll be able to look at some of the programs and gain some answers in terms of me coming back to you after this report is completed with some recommendations on how to improve our programs.
Joyce, may I ask a question? I think this is, this is excellent. In terms of, you're moving now from Lassie to here and you have, that's an enormous task itself and admirable that it's being undertaken. And then you want to do a self-review. And generally, self-reviews are a good, you know, good process to have periodically, not annually, but you know, maybe two or three years. Do you see the benefit in us allowing you to stay on task more with your, with your routine and just learning, you know, to run this program yourself and getting an outside resource to help you do this analysis and review versus doing this all in-house?
I think that's an interesting question. I believe it's doable and as I said, I will have assistants from the DCs, the assistant DCs, the guidance department, because we'll include how we service our general ed students with vital four plans as well in this, in this information. And I think much of it is going to be collection of data in numbers, our number of students, certified staff, non-certified staff, looking at our program objectives and what, what service delivery is actually going on in those programs, what interventions are being implemented. I really welcome the opportunity to take a good, good look at our programs. I really welcome the opportunity to take a good look at our programs.
Do you think that endeavor would be done in a more professional manner if you had, we had a, let's say, a more robust business office that was providing you numbers versus you mining your own data and numbers?
You know, I think, I think that we will, we will find budgetary information from this, for example, how many students are we sending out from a certain program? But I think, overall, I'm not so sure that the business office will have much bearing on our type of service delivery, our instruction, the supports that we have. Possibly, maybe, we may find that we're lacking some things. But I honestly don't know how much will correlate into the way the business office is functioning now. That's where...
I didn't mean so much for the way the business office is functioning as to have a resource, because as I understand, you don't have any financial analysis provided to you by the business office, is that correct?
I'd say it's probably limited.
Little or none, can I say?
I'd say little, maybe.
Okay. Not a lot, but little.
Yeah.
Then, in general, we have a huge amount of money and resources going in there, and it's always easier for someone who's, I've found, on a technical expertise, it's always good to have that resource to help you analyze that or provide you support. And that's really what I was asking, if that would be better, if you could have that during this period of time to look at numbers. If you're going to get a million dollars for something, how do you make it? How do you use that more effectively? Or if you're going to look at, you know, where you're spending your money? Where do you give the most bang for your dollar? That's really kind of an overall picture, because the items on this list are also overall pictures, system pictures inside your department. So I would just, I would just place the thought that you might want to consider what kind of resources you would want to do this, and whether, you know, outside of your department, what resources would be ideal to be...
Yeah. And I'm happy to entertain any directions that you have, any suggestions like that in terms of going along with this. I think that's great.
Were you going to include the parents at all in some of this review, and their expectations, their hopes, their disappointments?
We can, we can add, we will be doing a parent survey as part of being standalone, and we can certainly add the information from the survey to this. I just was not intending to do the survey first semester. So, again, I'm open to suggestions. I thought what might be beneficial would be to come back at the end of first semester so we could plan for next year. And that would be, you know, the timing. But certainly, this can be ongoing.
Well, I congratulate you for undertaking this self-examination. Oftentimes, it's difficult to look at yourself and critique yourself, and I think it'll be well worth it, and I'm really very happy that you may have proposed this.
Any other questions?
I just had a question, a statement, I don't know. Since this is our first year of implementing our own specialized programs away from LANSI, I'm assuming that there will be an end-of-the-year report on how it went, the transition in the first year. Perhaps at that time, the survey, the parent survey would be, I always like the parent feedback, because I think that gives you great insight as to how the program is working. So I would encourage you to include that in the report when that comes back.
Thanks.
The other thing I would also encourage you to do is to reach out to alumni who have graduated and who were in the program, who now have another point of view as to what occurred here, and what they have available to them at college level versus here, and, you know, so forth, in terms of graduation rates, et cetera.
That's a great idea. In terms of the LANSI review, too, I mean, not LANSI review, but the review on being standalone, the state board will be coming in in the spring. And, you know, I'm communicating with them throughout the year. But they'll come in, and they'll look at our IEPs, they'll take a look at some of the programs and things that we're doing, and they'll also be contacting parents. So that will be helpful information at that time.
The problem with alumni reviews, as we did this a few years ago, the term rate is abysmally low, like really low, and below 25%. We're closer to 10%. But Dr. Paul, I had two other questions that I know we have a less restrictive environment for students. Are students who need it or desire it still able to get self-contained services?
Yes.
Okay. And second question, as we get more and more into co-teaching, do the special ed teachers have, well, not certification, but do they have an area of expertise, an academic area like science, or English, or math?
We try to, and I, that's really done at the building level, but I know there's strong attempts to have a teacher who's very strong in math, for example, be the co-teacher for math. Yeah, they do work towards that. And just to go back to your other question about least restrictive environment, while, you know, we, the least restrictive environment could be a self-contained classroom first. Well, I'll be coming back to with further information.
Thank you. When you come to the center, we'll be on the seat for you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Paul. Next up on the agenda, we have personal action items. For, the recommendation is to approve these personal action items. Is there anyone who wishes to discuss or pull any of these items for discussion and to close?
For instance, the, what we teach are getting in math is quite a catch. He used to be the head of the math department, he was assistant principal. So, I mean, that is quite a catch.
Okay, hearing no one who wishes to discuss this, we can close the session. Looking for a motion to approve personal action items as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved by Ed, second by Victor. No call, please.
Mrs. Glanson?
Aye.
Dr. Skoda?
Aye.
Ms. Manley?
Aye.
Mr. Cassini?
Aye.
Mr. Corcoran?
Aye.
Mr. Q?
Aye.
Mrs. Gailall?
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda is new and oral business. If there's any member here who wishes to raise an issue of new and oral business, now would be your opportunity.
Claudia, I have two, apparently, I guess, designed my position as delegate to IASB convention. I have conflict come up, and I'm not able to attend.
You did indicate that to me. And so, we would be looking for another replacement. Rick, I was looking real positive for you. Okay.
Sarcasm is not one of your thoughts.
Yeah, I know. I think I'm the only other one who's going to the conference, and I actually would not want to do that, because I, my goal is to learn as much as I can when I go there, and it takes up a lot of the seminar time. So I guess we will go without this here. Any other member who has new and oral business at this time, please bring it up?
Very quickly, I don't want to add to RFPs, obviously based on my statement earlier, but something to think about would be whether we want to, at some point, go out with an RFP for a law firm that specializes in public collective bargaining, even though we're getting to that point. Just something to think about when we were talking earlier about specialized firms.
Yes, I would agree. That's definitely an area where the expert, maybe the special, that would be another area.
I would agree with both of those statements.
I would say a lot of discussion. I don't think we can do a proper service to special ed students or parents or the staff without doing that. Nor would we do a service to the taxpayers by not getting specialists on that, given that the cost for the staff is somewhere north of 70% of our $87 million budget. So I believe that whatever technical expertise the board and the administration needs on those, we should seek those in a competitive manner, and I think we should move forward with that sooner than later.
Just one last point. One of the things we'll look at is whatever of these six firms we're talking about, what their level of experience is in collective bargaining. I think that'll play into this.
But generally, they'll tell you they can do it all.
Probably. That's what I would do if I were them, so. All right. Next on the agenda is audience communication. Are there any individuals in the audience who wish to address the board at this time? Please state your name and tell them that you live in.
Hi, Joan Brandeis, Darian, Hinzel Salstube. I was wondering, you guys had discussed previously the procedure for applying to be on a committee. Can you tell us again what, because I have people that have been asking me that are very interested in finance and other committees.
I thought that I had sent that into this agenda, and it didn't make it on the agenda. So I'm hoping to get that on the next one.
Should they just email you for now?
They can, but I think we might have an application process.
Okay.
Okay. So I'd like everyone to kind of, you know, blast off all at once. So I would, if that didn't get to you, I will send it to you then. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
Okay, seeing none at this time, I believe that we are going to go over to close session again to discuss pending litigation, collective bargaining. Do we have any appointments? Can someone help me out there? I don't think we're done with that. And that's, oh, that's technical. No, we do have one coming this year. So we're going to move to adjourn to discuss pending litigation, collective bargaining, the appointment of plan and compensation, disciplined performance, or dismissal of employees. I do not believe that there will be any action taken in this session if we come back into open session. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn to close.
Second.
Moved by Victor, second by Rick. No call, please. Dr. Skoda?
Aye.
Ms. Manley?
Aye.
Mr. Cassini?
Aye.
Mr. Corcoran?
Aye.
Mr. Q?
Aye.
Mrs. Gailall?